Yes. Good evening. This is Doherty, workman of the city of Pleasantville. Date of date is June 6, 2022. Time is 6:30 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised and the city's in a big rate performance with open public meetings, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law Road Call.
Swan, Eric Davenport.
President.
Pamela.
Here.
Thomas.
President.
Camona.
President.
Korea.
President.
Sister Thong.
President.
All the detectives.
A motion to approve the previous minutes.
Motion.
Right there.
At this time, I take a motion to. Mayor, we have police departments moving sworn in officers.
Yes, is he here, chief? Oh, okay, we have a new officer that was sworn in, sworn in last week, and he was going to come today and introduce himself to all council and the community, but he's not here. Well, next meeting, possibly.
He's in the next five minutes, just so you know what he does, you know, we'll be looking at him again, it was just in an introduction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I intend to motion to go into executive session, so if I contract you on.
Necessary, sir, here.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's a. At this time, with the council, we want to go into executive sessions. Mr. Soester.
Yes, that's correct. I believe you've indicated the purpose of this executive session will be related to contract or contract issues.
So at this time, so at this time, the public, you have to excuse yourself for those that affected this contract. We're going into executive session for contractual issues, contractual conversation. Okay.
Okay, first of the agenda is ordinance number nine, we send the ordinance number one dash 2022, first reading.
Oh, no, sorry, sorry. There you go.
Yeah, two trillion, really.
Thank you, for the public and for the members of council, we were in executive session and three items were considered. If there is to be any action taken on any of those items, that will happen during the public session at this or some future meeting. The three matters generally involve contracts, with two of them, and the third involved the potential settlement of a tax appeal, which is on tonight's agenda. And the contract matters, again, were for the benefit of council to receive attorney-client advice on the matters involved in this to contract situations, and if actions taken on either, then that happened in the public session.
Okay, now proceed. Ordinance number nine, we're sending ordinance number one dash 2022, first reading.
And any questions?
Ordinance number 10, providing for the impoundment and corpiature of all terrain vehicles and dirt bikes operated up on public streets, highways, or rightways in violation of NJSA 39 colon 3C dash 17, first reading.
Any questions?
Resolution 104, authorizing tax collector to refund taxes as a result of the tax court settlement.
Any questions?
Resolution 105, approval to submit a local transportation planning fund application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey DOT.
Any questions?
Resolution 106, approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Transit Village Grant Program.
Resolutions 105, 106, and 107, and 108 are all New Jersey DOT resolutions to support our grant applications for year 2023, the projects have not been identified yet, this just allows us to show the state that we're interested in applying for rent.
Resolution 107, approval to submit a municipal aid grant application and execute grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation.
Any questions?
Resolution 108, approved to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey DOT for the Safe Streets to Transit Program.
Questions?
Resolution 109, negotiating an urban and proud zone fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $110,049.00.
Any questions?
Resolution 110, authorize submission of a grant application and execution of a grant contract with the NJDOT for the acquisition of an automated license plate reader.
Any questions?
Resolution 111, provide for budget insertion into the 2022 budget.
Questions?
Resolution 112, approval of the renewal of public licenses for the 2022 through 2023 term.
Any questions?
Resolution 113, approval to renew the culinary retail distribution liquor licenses for the 2022 through 2023 term.
Any questions?
Resolution 114, approving the renewal of culinary retail consumption liquor licenses for the 2022, the 2023 term.
Any questions?
Resolution 115, authorize submission of application for the New Jersey Department of Human Services Division on Mental Health and Addiction Services Grant Funding.
Any questions?
Resolution 116, approving approval of a community yard sale in the city on June the 25th at the Tilton Avenue Ballpark.
Any questions?
Resolution 117, appoint Richard Pashini to the position of part-time tax assessor for the city.
Any questions?
Yes. This is someone new, this is a new one. This is our current part-time tax assessor, he came in under an expired term, and now we are reappointing him to his new term.
Okay, I just didn't see.
Can you, how long is the term, please?
Four years.
So we're going in four years for a part-time tax?
Assessor. That's, I said, it was four years. He was previously suspended out of expired, unexpired term for previous tax assessment, so now he has to do a whole new term. Question. The previous tax collector was full-time?
Yes. It's tax assessor.
I'm an assessor, I'm sorry.
And this, please know that the city did its due diligence, you were not a councilperson at the time, and we, budgetarily and operationally, we do not need a full-time tax assessor at this time, so currently what you have is a part-time tax assessor, which is done throughout all of Atlantic County, and you have a clerk in the office for those days where their assessor is not available, and that person is currently in school taking tax assessor classes.
Well, can I have another question, what is the salary for the year for a part-time position?
His current salary, I think is in the thirties, I think it's thirty-two or something like that.
Any questions?
Yes, I have another question, how many days and how many hours does he work a week?
He's available every day of the week for the city of Pleasantville, he's in the office one day a week, and the clerk is in the office three days a week, and the other two days a week, the clerk is across the street at the collector's office, so we have accessibility to the assessor five days a week.
Any more questions?
Resolution 119, authorizing a tax collector to refund taxes for certain properties in the city.
Any questions?
Resolution 120, authorizing the tax collector to cancel taxes for disabled veterans.
Any questions?
Resolution 121, authorizing agreement for redemption and installments for municipal taxing.
Questions?
Resolution 122, add-on, authorizing the tax collector to prepare and mail estimated tax bills.
Questions?
Next is the view of the bill list.
Good evening. I told the meeting to build this, I just put mine back in my car, I'm saying we were done for tonight, I apologize. If you're looking at bills for the checks that were paid between this council meeting and this council meeting, you'll see a couple of them that were, one was, you'll see $4,000 for Dan Cook, that was an oversight, that should have been approved, they have councilmen as their, their, of course, for duty, that prosecutor. Now, wire transfer, you'll see the first one, 653, that was payroll, $10,000 for postage, 419 was the medical insurance for retiring and active employees, 229 to West Windsor Township, that was a prepayment of a bond anticipation note that was being carried on for a couple of years, and then the last payroll of that Friday of $590,000. For the bills that are looking to be approved for this time, let me go through here real quickly, because I haven't noted. On page two, you'll see Construction Plus Family, that was a lot of work that's been done down at Recreation Center, we've replaced windows, we fixed up the bathrooms and stalls, changed ceiling tiles, a myriad of work that's been going on down there for the last month, these are the final payments. If you go down to page three, we're in the middle of the division service plan, it is our monthly payment for our eye- eye- percutting benefits for the employees. Go to page four, very top, Anthony, I might go down, not that name. If you've been through City Hall, you'll see that we've had new sort of paint on the walls, they taped, sanded, high-glossed all the white, white trim, and painted their, down there, so that was the $5,400, that was done probably in a matter of about four days, within a week of this, they worked at night to do the work, so they wouldn't interfere with our operations.
Good question.
You can go down the bottom, page four, Jr. Mechanical. On page four, Jr. Mechanical, there's work being done, that was done at the Joker's Building, some of it was irrigation work, some of it was inside the, the snack bar. There's still more work to be done, they have to replace a triple sink, we're having a hard time locating that exact piece of equipment, we may have to do some modifications to reduce, to fight it. On top of page six, this is Treasury of the State of New Jersey, this is a permit that we have to pay every year to the state for our stormwater discharge permit. And then everything else, I'm sorry, we'll go one more, page seven, there are two there, the first one, Track Care Transportation, that's for a month of April and May for their EMS services, that's two months worth, and then two down, Union Roofing Contractors, the mayor will tell you, we had a leak in the second floor over at City Hall, they came in and took care of all that work. They've been doing a couple of jobs for us with the firehouse and the police stations, it seemed to be very, very good, and we don't seem to have the problem reoccurring.
You got a question, the last one, with Wendy, can you just find out?
There's one on.
The last one. Wendy.
Wendy Heinz?
Yes.
That is, she is a widow, her husband was retired, please. And by contract, we continue to pay medical benefits for retirees, and this is, I believe, this is four months' worth of payments.
So, I know this was brought up in committee, and I did talk to council president about it, is there any kind of way that we could get the contract so we can look over this before this is paid? Because I see, I guess, there was some legal, there's some legal fees here for this incident, so if we were doing it already, how come we have legal fees, and you said that this is four months of payment?
Yes, this is reimbursement for four months.
Yeah, so let me explain what you're referring to, and we did talk about this in the Finance Committee, this particular amount that's on this bill is for the current, even though we're backing it up to April, she's entitled to that per contract, the issue that I think you're referring to is back reimbursement that has not made this bill yet that we brought up in committee, so this amount was not brought up in committee, because this is what the person is entitled to, per the contract, for all these other names that you see on this bill list, for reimbursement payments, she's under the same contractual agreement, so we can let you see the contract, but this is not the item that you're questioning that was questioned at committee, that's a different amount, and that is for, that's about $5,000 amount.
Right, because that's what.
Yeah, that's not this, this is her, this is her normal payment that you will see in the bill list for payment.
So, question, if this is normal, how come we're backdating it?
Because there was issues with the contract, there was issues when her present passed, there was issues with the timing of her completing her paperwork, once we got that settled, we got those bills in, and we put this on the bill list to be paid, so there is no question in my mind about this amount, there is a question that we want to Finance Committee about the time period where she was not covered, because she did not complete the paperwork in time, in a timely fashion, this amount of paperwork was completed in time for her to get reimbursed.
I just have more questions on this, council president, but I believe that councilwoman is trying to say that it did not come through finance?
Yeah, it was, it was. For clarification, it was not. Probably take me, thank you, again for committee, is what I'm trying to say, and the item that you're referencing is not the item that you're questioning on this bill list, it's a different amount, and a different subject matter when the person was not under contract, yes, she's covered, and this is her normal payment that you'll see, once we got it caught up with the issues that she had. And you can still get the contract, I understand.
Yeah, I still have questions about this particular incident.
Oh, you're talking about the actual police contract?
I'm sorry, the contract that specified that she's entitled to this.
That's the normal.
Police contract.
Police contract.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm asking for.
But that, yeah, we'll get that to you, you're just talking about a different issue, I know that for sure.
Is every surviving spouse entitled to the same thing?
The contract, the language is ambiguous, and so this is where, this is what we discussed in the committee meeting, and committee advised us, were you on that committee?
No.
Okay, so, the committee advised us that we can bring it before full council, which has not reached you all yet.
Mindset, the thought process of the committee, she, her husband passed and.
I think, and I want, council, you have to help us, because I don't want to be talking about a person, you know, in matter, in this form, so, tell us where we, you know, draw the line here, but the contract is the contract, and I'll share that with everyone, but that is not the, the issue that's on the bill list today.
But just for clarification, the contract is with the, not with the surviving spouse, so the contract.
You have to read the language, and we can discuss that.
And over the years, the contract has changed, so this, this point, when, we believe, when he was serving, it was under one contract, the contract has changed over the years to maybe not cover things that were grandfathered in.
So these legal fees for Cooper Levison, that's for what we don't have in.
This is all, this is for brick setting here, some of those stuff is for.
Oh, no, I'm talking about this 1400.
Yeah, it's specific to that, that thing.
Page three, general legal.
It's the last one on the half.
There, that one, the bill again, cross for.
Behind still.
Unless it's for a lot of ketchup.
No, the 14, the 1400 is specifically for that legal bill, but not.
The one that's not in front of us there. Correct.
Any other questions? Questions on the side? On the clerk.
Okay, that's the public portion on Agenda Id. Zone.
Next is the public portion on Agenda Id. Zone, only can forward, time frame, three minutes, one time, and then mic.
Good evening, Russell Noel, I have a question, reference to that last discussion you are just talking about on the bill list, who is the attorney that reviewed the language on behalf of the city? Also, you already mentioned the spouse of the deceased, so you open the floor for the person to be discussed, who is this person being paid as a spouse with language about a contract, so did you have a contract with the deceased employee, or do you have a contract with the spouse of the deceased employee? If the language is ambiguous, who is the attorney that reviewed the contract?
The labor attorney, Cooper Levison.
And why is this an isolated case, or is this something that is a precedent, or is this something that's already been established?
Something that has been established.
Okay, in reference to Id. Number two, ordinance number 10, what is, what does that entail as far as how you determine an all-terrain vehicle, a dirt bike, and does that mean that people will be getting arrested or fined?
That's a great question, we have our chief of police here to help you with that with these ones.
As you know, we've had the dirt bike problem and the ATVs on the, on the roadways, this right here will kind of help us, traditionally, what has happened is, if we get lucky enough and get one of these ATVs, and we impound them, they come in with the proper documentation, and we give them back, and then we have the problem, just, just keep repeating itself. So, under this right here, that they're putting before you now, if we get one of these dirt bikes, and we can show that it's been a, whoever's operating it is a threat to the community, through our investigation, when we get them, we will impound them and seize them, they won't get them back, that's what this.
Okay, and as far as the club liquor licenses, we have clubs in Pleasantville, or who, what businesses are there?
I'll let it search.
They're bona fide organizations, such as American Legion and the Yacht Club that's located on Bayou Avenue.
Okay, and.
So the state calls a club, but it's not a nightclub.
And as far as the providing budget insertion, what is being inserted?
There is a grant that the city has under the Atlantic County Government, under the Municipal Alliance, which is a program to, for grassroots organizations within the community to, to advocate against substance abuse, so under the current grant, the city is being awarded, I think, a little over $3,100, and this grant will go to an organization in the South Main Street School, where they're doing a vaping education program.
Is that going to be implemented citywide?
Well, currently, starting out at.
As a pilot?
Yeah, and hopefully, if it's successful, we'll take it around town.
And ordinance number nine, what does that entail? Because it's just the number.
I have to tell you the tour, but I'll let our attorney explain it.
The title of ordinance number nine pretty much explains the entirety of it, if it asks on second reading, it would affect the rescission of ordinance number one of 2022, should anybody familiar with it?
No, I'm here for the record, sir.
For the record, ordinance one of 2022 was the ordinance adopted by council, a couple of them, in fact, authorizing the sewer concession area.
Now, is this a rescension to?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted, because when I wasn't talking, they were talking, does that count as my time? Okay, so, as this is a rescension, is that mean that they're going to restructure a contract, because there is money already being taken out as far as a bond for our sewer project, or does that mean it's just completely rescinded and not revisited?
The legal effect, if it passes, would be simply that ordinance one of 2022 would be voided, what flows from that, we are not in a session to discuss that.
Okay, thank you.
Pleasantville City Council, how are you? Residents and supporters of Pleasantville, as stated, I made a promise outside of these doors, today, this meeting and agenda states June 6, 2022, states 6:30 PM, today, you all called in Burnhard Capital Partners during an executive session. Contractual law, I have questions, who from this administration negotiated the termsheet and/or member random of understanding agreement that were vote for, inanimously, involving Burnhard Capital Partners, and who does that negotiation include? The mayor, business administrator, and/or CFO, and what has changed since the original negotiation?
I assume the question was directed to me, the, I don't know personally, who was involved at the various negotiating stages, so I'm sure that representatives of council and perhaps the mayor have been involved at different points, and the substance of what they discussed at any time during the negotiation is not for public discussion, but is for public consideration as to what actions council may take, to this point, they previously adopted ordinance one, there is an ordinance on tonight's agenda, ordinance nine, which would have impact on that issue as well, but the particulars of what was said by whom and when, I don't have that information, and if I did, I couldn't share it with the public anymore.
Okay, how many public meetings were held prior to the ordinance, if rescinded at all? In reference to anything pertaining to Burnhard Capital and any waterway utility, anything?
Do not know how many public sessions have happened, I know there was a public session that preceded the city's filing of the local finance board, there may have been others, at least two public sessions in order to adopt ordinance one, the second of which would have been a public hearing, and if ordinance nine goes forward, there is obviously tonight's agenda, and there would be then a second reading, which would also make the public hear.
Thank you so much, Paul. Let's say it's funny.
Thank you.
Anyone else a Republican?
Augustus Army, 300 South Chester Avenue. Augustus Army, three hundred South Chester Avenue. Tonight, I think we have made history. Our municipality that I know was founded in eighteen eighty-eight and did a math. That's about a hundred and thirty-five years. I respect tonight to resolve the feelings of your residents tonight of what happened. We rushed to our council meeting and the time is six thirty. And you know, we spent a couple of hours out there. And that's not good. So I stand before you tonight, I'm about forty-nine years in your seat. And never, never, never have we done. The last council session wasn't too bad, but tonight I haven't had dinner yet. My point is that we consider, I don't tell you what to do. That we consider the time that this city and this council meetings took place on the first and the third of the month. Holidays, it's a federal Monday, we went to West and all you know that. My forty-nine years, we did, and we did tonight, the second and the fourth of the month. And we call that the word slash. It is not fair that we have violated tonight the Sunshine Act. Forty A stipulates the procedures of municipalities in the state of New Jersey. I'm very angry and much that. I know you guys, I love you guys. I came tonight to compliment everybody who's doing the work in City Hall. The floor is beautiful and the walls are coming back committee. The last council meeting, we did talk about the old pipe holes. I almost hit one on a wooden avenue and that hole was the half the length of my car. And thank God I could. I immediately got home and I called Mr. Hubbard, our new director of public works, and he took care of it. I took the time to make it. Park Avenue, New Street, no, not, I'm trying to. Park Avenue is bad and on T-Ball. So I just mentioned that to say, don't do time tonight because I think this might suspend a rule. But if we could act a little bit more speedy about this problem. Meeting with your director of public works, that is a machine, we talked to our council system. That is, that is a machine that has to do that. What I said before, I said, what can we do to help to eliminate or erase those pipe holes? They are terrible. So thank you for listening. Please do consider situations such as tonight, you might have to advertise a little bit differently.
Councilman, councilman, all due, all respect, all due respect for the time that you passed this council here. Starting in nineteen seventy-one, when you were the first councilman on council, shortly after Dr. King was killed. The business that we had changed a little bit from the business, the way we used to do business. And I'm not saying that I would not, as a council president, be a fan of some of the things that has taken, has taken place. When you were on council and we made agreements, those agreements meant something. It's like an older man giving a handshake and giving his word. That's what they meant. So we were trying to attempt to clear the air. And my apologies to you and the public, but we were attempting to try to clear the air. Thank you. Next, anyone else from the public?
Just say I want to hear, it's a county that's in night, that was a pleasure.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Alan Maddox, I'm on the way to the Smoeberry Avenue, Pleasantville, Pleasantville. I have a question in reference to the executive session which occurred earlier. There have been accusations made that the Sunshine Act was violated. And my question is, do you, could you justify or explain how it was not violated?
Council, go ahead, council. Thanks, Matt. Yes, without getting into any details of what discussions happened and the executive session, we can't do. Council was considering a variety of issues touching on the sewer concession contract. The council had come up with several specific factual questions, which they needed to get information on from, you know, the people who had that information, representatives of Bernard, in order for council then to continue and complete its deliberations on matters that crossed into the executive session to begin with. So the interaction between council and Bernard was limited to posing of specific questions and presentation of answers from representatives of Bernard, Bernard representatives, and let the room and council continue their deliberations.
Okay, and I'm assuming that the discussion was of a contractual nature?
We were, we were in executive session to discuss under the general rubric of contract, which of course necessarily entails the giving and receiving of information from the attorney, attorney-client discussions. So we had those types of discussions, me being counsel myself, prior to the Bernard folks coming into the room, when they presented their evidence or their answers to the questions from council. Then council continued discussion of contractual issues and participated in attorney-client discussions.
Anyone else from the public?
Lieutenant Jones, Pleasantville. I'd just like to point out a comment with Ross, who I solicited just said. He says that the comments and discussions that were just held between Bernard Capital persons and the city council were private because of client, you know, client privilege thing. However, the memorandum of understanding, and as far as I know, all of the agreements are between the city of Pleasantville and Pleasantville Environmental Partners, not Bernard Capital. So therefore, they should not have that exemption. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Urban Moreno, seven thirty, New Maple Road. City council, I'm exhausted. It's getting ridiculous at this point. And Councilman Davenport, I wish you had checked up on me. Because what you didn't see outside is the Bernard Capital gentleman here disrespecting our community and one of them coming up to me face to face because I was speaking the truth. So I wish you had come up to me and asked me if I was okay.
You're not my wife. If you were my wife, then I would have come to you.
Perfect.
I'm pretty sure you can protect yourself, right?
But I'm a resident of this city council. No, I just want you to understand who you're dealing with in this room. There were plenty of witnesses, including your own police officers and the chief of police. So if you think that I'm exaggerating, councilman, if you think I'm exaggerating, talk to them. They're a neutral party. But what's so concerning is that Councilman Davenport has said it himself. They spent two years on this deal. All this time, all this effort. But we've been out there waiting while you guys have been asking questions and questioning and talking to Bernard Capital all by yourselves. So when this deal was about to go through, a lot of the city council people said, oh, we have the answers. We know all the facts. We know what we're doing. We know what we're doing, what's best for the city. Well, us standing out there for over two hours indicates to me that you did not have all the facts. That's the point that I'm trying to get across. So we're already here in the late stages. I'm not even sure if the MOU is even valid. Can you tell me that, Sillizert? When, when does it expire, the MOU with Bernard Capital?
I'm not going to give a legal opinion on the cuff on that. If you think that I need to discuss it, I'll discuss it with council and advise them on what their rights are.
It's just this, it's a date. When does the MOU expire? You should know this as a city solicitor.
It's not as simple as that because any agreement can be deemed to be extended by the conduct of the parties. I'm not saying that's happened here or didn't. But there are a number of ways in which what looks to be a firm date is not in fact a firm date or is potentially attackable as being something other than a firm.
So was it extended, the MOU? Does anybody know?
No.
Was it extended? Because to me, it's expired. So unless there were any changes to the MOU, it's expired and we're dealing in bad faith.
Exactly.
So that's all. You had two years, but we're still trying to figure things out, right? Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? This way. Yes.
Good evening, council, Camp Reilly from Allen and Obray. I'm outside council to Bernard Capital Partners and to the concessionaire for this transaction. There are a couple of things I want to clear up that have been raised in this public meeting. The first of which is the timeline and the number of approvals that the council has already given on this contract and the actions that the council has already taken in respect of this deal. So if you'll indulge me here, I'll take you through those dates, just so the question that was asked, it's a, it's a proper response.
Thank you. Can I, sorry, can you speak up when you speak?
Yeah, I'm just getting my notes here, absolutely. Okay, apologies for the delay, I was pulling out my notes. So September twentieth, twenty twenty-one, city council passed a resolution authorizing the execution of the MOU. So that was the first official administrative act taken by the city in respect of the concession. September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, the MOU was actually executed by the city. November first, twenty twenty-one, city council passed a resolution authorizing the application to the local finance board, which is a requirement of New Jersey law for this type of contract.
And those, and if you, do you remember, you remember also those counts, the votes?
Those votes were all unanimous votes by the council. March second, twenty twenty-two, city council passes ordinance number one, approving execution of the concession agreement. Again, a unanimous vote. And then things changed. People stopped returning our calls. We continually contacted the city's representatives to find out when we could engage on discussions to finalize the concession agreement. No response, complete silence. Now here we are with a ordinance before the council to rescind the ordinance approving the deal. This is after all of this administrative action that was taken by unanimous vote. So I'd like to reiterate the question that was asked earlier. What's changed? Why after the sponsors of the concessionaire have advanced two hundred thousand dollars to the city to pay for their legal fees in advance, advanced forty thousand dollars for due diligence costs in advance at the request of the city, and have paid me to negotiate this contract? There is nearly a million dollars of development costs devoted to this contract in reliance of each one of those administrative acts and the execution of the MOU. I think it's important for the council to take note of those facts and for the public to take note of those facts. And also to say, if the action is taken to rescind the contract, then we are, on behalf of Bernard, going to take appropriate action to protect ourselves.
You want your money, huh?
We said it.
Good. I hope you can sleep at night.
I really hope. Please.
In your million dollar home, I hope you can sleep at night.
Council president, my name is Christian Moreno Rodriguez. And the short and simple answer to the attorney's questions is that the people got involved. That's what changed.
That's right.
The people found out what was going on and that's what changed. You want to know why they're not returning your phone calls, attorney? It's because the people are here every single council meeting, full, full room to demand answers and change and transparency. That's what changed. Everything he described before the people got involved, empty meetings, council members not advertising meetings, no transparency, backdoor deals going on. And then the people got involved. The people heard about this. Councilmen started finally communicating and telling the people when the dates were. So that's what changed. And I hope we all get just as much time as this attorney got. We may not have his money, but we have power too, the power to vote. And thank goodness tomorrow's election day. Because at least one person on this council could be held accountable starting tomorrow. Incumbent or not, you stand with the people or we vote you out? You want to know what happened outside while you were having executive session? Revolution was happening outside. People are talking about voting. People are talking about what ward am I in? Let me vote for the first time. How can I get involved? Look at the demographics of this room. We may not have all suits like this attorney, like Bernard Capital. We're working class people, but we still have the power to vote. And as long as we have that, we're going to keep fighting. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. I had Olivia Caldwell, one thousand Church Street, Pleasantville. Have a question for the attorney. So I've heard them refer to an MOU and an agreement. My question is, do we, do you have a legal contract that binds the city to these people?
Nope. Nope. No.
That is unfortunately a question I cannot discuss. There is, wow, that's a different question. The issue before council right now goes to the very part of what is in place and what does it mean legally? I give council legal advice as I see appropriate, to the best of my ability on that subject. It is an open question.
So that is definitely something that the citizens of Pleasantville are going to want to know. Where and what are we legally bound to? And how long has council known that? So that we, as the public, could be made aware. Because a memorandum of understanding is one thing. An agreement and a contract is totally a different thing. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public?
Excuse me, I would just like to make one point. You made the rules, there would also be three minutes, and people of the city have three minutes without objection.
Anyone else from the public?
The MOU agreement. The MOU agreement itself states that it's an expired agreement. It says that it was to be enforced at the earliest of those times, the concession agreement being closed or a four-month period from the time it was signed in September. So therefore, in January, this is a non-avoided deal. And if they lost money trying to get money, that's how it goes when you try to get money.
I'm insulted again, yeah.
Again, like you're stupid.
Not a lawsuit.
Bobby, Bobby Ross, listen. Not for nothing, but this is, this is to everybody. Not for nothing, but we can do anything together. If we, anything is possible if you work together, right?
No, we don't want to.
We're threatening Suez.
Can I, can I, please? All right. So please understand, number one, we didn't just come into town, or they didn't just come into town and say, "We just want to take what we want," if there was an RFP. They answered it. That RFP was answered and chosen over American Water, who also put in a bid. You had a choice between $12 million sale. We got no say in rates or anything else. They can do whatever they want to do. They can hire whoever they want. Fire Capital along with its, you know, proposed partners, IQWT, which is a minority arm, and at the time, Suez. That plan was to partner up with the city and do a public-private partnership. Just to bring you guys up to speed, that was something different than a sale. Because with this deal, we're offering $15 million along with repairing all the services, and your council members, along with your business administrator, and your, at the time, attorney, determined those rates. We met with them. We said, "What do you need to make this work for your city?" They established those rates. We did not. All we did was go back, and I presented to Bernard Capital, "What are, you know, can you do this?" Guys, I just want to be honest. Bernard Capital decided, "Let's look over the numbers." They looked over the numbers for about a week, about, in honesty, about six days it took them to look over the numbers. They agreed that they would do the deal based on the terms that council has set. Those terms included everything that you see in the deal. All those numbers that you see in the deal, everything that you seen there, has been advised by their attorney. And they went through the whole, the whole thing, right? And anybody here can admit or not admit, but the team here did everything that we were asked to do. Everyone. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
I have one question. Yeah, I do. I can't say it. I want to ask E20 honestly. Did you guys, any attorneys who advised you guys? Did y'all truly read that contract inside? Now, by the way, my name is Mona Tally. I'm a resident of Pleasantville. Did y'all read that contract honestly, word for word? And did you understand what you were reading? For you guys on the council? That's the question for you guys. As the advising attorney, did you read the contract? And do your due diligence as attorney for Pleasantville and advise them appropriately as to the language of their contract?
I have read the contract. Another attorney in our office did the initial review and read everything and prepared written advice to council. The details worked, obviously, I can't share because that's a term of privilege between us and...
That's a good output. Okay.
That's a good trip.
Yeah, you're good.
I don't speak for any members of council as to what they did or didn't do. And the advice that I've given counsel and other members of my department giving counsel, we believe is then. That's advice that we can give.
And if you were a resident of Pleasantville, a taxpayer here in Pleasantville, you wouldn't be okay with this contract?
Can't answer that.
I know. Again, did you guys, did you guys, as city council members, read the contract? Whole article? And y'all, and y'all agreed to this according to the dates that this gentleman listed to y'all?
All dates that he listed, and a couple more. I'm thinking of missing one.
They go on the payday? They go on the payday?
They know in this whole stuff.
Anyone else from the public?
I'm Nate Brown, I was at Pleasantville for two years. I'm going to take it off. Can you explain this formula on page 36?
You should have said it.
Right here. Can you see?
He wants Bernard Capital to explain it.
No, he said y'all can't know what the formula is. I want y'all to explain it. Who's somebody? Well, somebody ain't telling the truth. If you saying you didn't do it, but he's saying that you did. He's saying these, all these numbers and everything came from you. So what, who can explain this formula on page 36?
We can help you out.
No, we need to hear what else we can bring to this.
Come on up. Help all of us.
We want the city to...
The guy just come up with that one.
I got a question, while I'm still here. Am I understanding that no contract is signed, right? Yo, get some water, please.
Come on, y'all.
I'm asking a question. I can't hear. Can you answer me? You just said something, but I didn't hear you. Mr. President. No, I have to lay shit out, but I'm just going to ring. I didn't ask you about who voted. I asked you, did you sign the contract? That's the question. Is the contract signed? If the contract is not signed, then you're not bound by nothing. And I'm telling you that the people do not want it. And you have been presented with viable solutions to this issue that you refuse to even take into consideration. For what reason, I don't know. Like, why are you so dug in on doing something that the people you represent, not dictate to, don't want? I'm trying to understand that. It makes no sense to me. It's, is, why are you so dug in? Is that, is that directed to Ricky? That's anybody that want to answer. Everybody. Why you so dug in to something that nobody wants in the city? When we've been, we, several people have come up here and given you many different valuable suggestions that you could use to solve this sewer situation. And you won't even consider it. You won't even consider it. And you sit there, you look down your nose at people, you all smug. You don't have an answer for no question. Nobody answers. Everything is top secret. Except the fact that you don't care about how much they charge me for the next 39 years.
I want to say this.
Please.
Completely and totally care about the city of Pleasantville. We completely and totally care about the city of Pleasantville.
Okay, is that the reason why you never addressed the Latino population? You never gave them any of this information in a language that they can understand?
What you can do is you ask the question. I'm answering your question.
You don't dictate to me.
Yes, I'm the moderator.
You might be the moderator, but change your tone.
Yes, I...
Watch your tone.
You asked the question.
Be respectful.
I listened to you when you were talking.
Yes, and I can listen to you, but you have to be respectful.
What was posed to us in the beginning was a $10,000, a $10,000, $10,000, a $10,000, a $10 million sale of the system. That $10 million sale of the system would be just like it was for Egg Harbor City, who just sold their system. It was New Jersey American Water. It was a $10 million sale. That $10 million sale was just what for Clove City. Those rates, you can look them up, there's some, those rates for Egg Harbor City went up to a number of 97%.
Okay, but what's your line?
So what we ended up, and how we got to that point to even entertain that in the first place, for health and safety reasons. The health and safety reasons of this community made us look at an alternative because we weren't being successful. We weren't being successful. And if we got a grant, we're not able to do the street because we have to give the money back for the grant because the grant itself said that you would have to do the infrastructure. The infrastructure has been a holdup to this city and the growth of the city of Pleasantville this whole time. This whole time. So we looked at, looked at, we took a hard look at New Jersey American Water and that deal. And that deal was such an egregious deal that when it went to the above board of Public Utilities, you had to put an additional $2 million into it. So it wasn't a $10 million sale. It was a $12 million sale. It was an embarrassment. So then we reached out after we, after we took that one off our books, didn't consider it, and we never did any negotiations with New Jersey American Water. We reached out, and that's when we reached out to the Suez, this group Bernard Capital. And Bernard Capital, after careful negotiations with administrators, Councilman Davenport, Mayor Ward, myself, and at times, sometimes, Councilman Swann, and I see it for them. After two and a half years, we reached an agreement. We reached an agreement. We went through a series of time when we took votes, and those votes were 7-0, 7-0, 7-0, 7-0.
But they not 7-0 on that one.
And this, and let me, let me say this, let me say this to you. It's like we were given, given the time. And the time is to take the city and move the city forward. We've done multiple, different type of development deals around the city. You see your library, you see this building up next door, and so many other things. Woodland Avenue, giving those people on Woodland Avenue the opportunity to be homeowners, moving them to scattered sites, then bringing them back to site form. So in my years of service, in my time of service, which a little bit of it I explained to Mr. Harmon because he was talking about the delay in time, we didn't hold up progress. We thought it out. We are transparent. Those meetings are, our meetings are televised. And with those televised, with the televised meetings that we have, you have a chance to look at those meetings. And not only televised, they were on Facebook. Not only on Facebook, they were on YouTube. It gave you the opportunity to, and...
Were they in any Latin...
They were in, they were in announcements.
Were they in any Latin...
So I told you, we didn't have a Latin, a strong Latin community that demanded that, that demanded those things in. Our two Latin councilmen here taking those into consideration. So they, but we hadn't had it. So, but, 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 to get, to get, to get to the point, to get to your point. This council here, we look at the fact that we were doing the very best that we possibly can. There's no way in the world that myself, as the council president, want to roll in the National NAACP Convention and put you out on the street. So we had to find an alternative for a different reason, for our health and safety. Because we don't want a fling issue in the city of Pleasantville. You can go to Councilman Swann's site when you talk about the depths of, of the various things that could happen to our sewer system, to a sewer system in Pleasantville. It can happen, if it almost happened to Newark, it could almost happen to Pleasantville.
Okay, but you're not...
Myself, myself...
You're going all around the world, like, you're not addressing what I asked you.
No, 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 no.
And the question I asked you, first of all, is there a signed contract?
The bill that we signed here is...
And why are you not considering options that have been presented to you by...
Fifteen times better than the bill, than the deal that was brought to us.
Okay, are you finished?
That's how we got to this point.
Right, okay.
I had to explain it.
But I didn't ask you to explain that. I asked you, was there a signed contract? And you're keep, and you keep telling me that there isn't. So you're not bound to this thing. And then I asked you, why aren't you not considering the alternatives that have been presented to you that will surely take care of what it is that you need to do for the city of Pleasantville? And now I got a third question. Instead of digging in on this so hard and wasting everybody's time on something that they don't want, why aren't you meeting somewhere or having open meetings, ward meetings, whatever kind of meetings you need to involve the public to come up with some ideas to create a revenue, economic stream of income for the city of Pleasantville that does not include gouging the citizens of Pleasantville?
We will pay to fix our sewer.
Yeah, we don't, we, we don't need outsiders.
We pay, we will pay.
We offered to compromise with you on that, and you're not even willing to accept that. You won't accept nothing that we said. And we're the taxpayers. And you are the, you represent the people that voted you up there. You don't dictate. This is not Russia. So you don't dictate to us what's going to happen. You represent our wishes. So I think that you need to reconsider this. Stop up playing all these games. Just get rid of these people over here, and let's fix our problem.
Anyone else from the public?
He took.
Really? First of all, my name is Mr. Moreno, Efeaki Moreno. I'm City Attorney, I still know Pleasantville. Consuments, he's the president of the Consuments. You can, you can see and hear what happened. Let's look forward, because we waste time to go back to ground. You see right now the situation. Basically, you guys got to do something. Because right now, we hear you guys, right? We hear the lawyers or whatever that represent the community. I don't want to get my pocket hurt to pay no for any money of the sewer service. Let's look forward, let's see what we can do to make sure the community is happy. Because you can hear, we don't want this thing. Anybody of you guys living in Pleasantville, of the Consuments?
Oh, raise your hand.
Let me raise your hands. That way you guys, that way we want to see how many people were affected. So, so you guys, I think you guys going to pay too, right? So, let's see. Just, that's exactly what I want to say, Ross. All right? Yo, look forward.
Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. My name is 1301 Broad Street. Question. What were y'all doing with the sewer money that was already collected? I asked that question over, and I have not gotten an answer. And I recall, we had a meeting at the Recreation Center. And the funds were used for something else, if I'm not mistaken. I don't understand. If you're in a position and it is for, you're collecting money for the sewer, why the heck didn't you use it to fix what needed to be fixed in Pleasantville? I don't understand it. I really don't understand it. I know you say you're concerned for Pleasantville, but all of y'all need to examine why you chose to be here. And if you are representing the people that you're supposed to be representing. It's not about what you think. You should be representing, asking us what we think. And that should help you to move forward. Any questions? What did y'all do with the money? And that's, and no disrespect, but I asked that question before, and I have not gotten an answer. I don't understand. If it's sewer, it should be allotted. Who are that?
What's your name, ma'am?
Marfella Williams. 1301 Broad Street.
I, I have to say something. I just want you to understand, when I became the chair of that committee and we saw certain things going on, those were questions that were asked. You know, what's been going on with the money? How was it being spent? It's been advocated to do other things that we didn't agree with. And the thing of it is, is this. And the thing of it is, is this, you're talking about what are we doing? The only proposal that I've gotten from anyone out here is to go back to doing the same thing that hadn't worked for 30 years, that got us into the problem that we're in now. So what are we going to do to move forward? I haven't gotten a viable solution or, you know, answer to what anybody suggests, is suggesting to do. This thing that we've done, I believe in it and I'm not going to, listen to me, let me finish what I'm saying. I'm not going to let a group full of people, and I, and I respect you all, I've talked to you all, I've talked to some of you by myself. There's 20,000 people in Pleasantville. We have a room full of people here right now that don't agree with it. I talk to people on the street every day that are ready to move forward, that do not like to see our streets in disrepair, that doesn't like to see the community in the way that we're moving right now. This is something that is possible, that is going to bring in investors. It's going to attract people to come into our sys, our city and invest in moving our city forward. So with the fact that it's going to take care of our sewer, which we haven't been doing at all, nothing's been done to it. And you're thinking that you can just say, okay, now we're going to start borrowing money to fix this problem? You don't know how in-depth this problem is. You don't know where this is going to take the city. And that's what we're trying to prevent.
I know where it's going to take my pocket.
Well, one way or the other, one way or the other, your pocket is going to be impacted. I don't care how you cut it, whether you cut it sideways or whatever way you want, your pocket is going to be impacted. So it's what are you going to get out of the impact that is going to happen? Because we haven't raised taxes in 10 years, which was a total mishap. In 10 years, right? We haven't raised, we haven't raised sewer taxes in 10 years. In 10 years, we haven't raised sewer taxes. So therefore, there are issues that need to be addressed. You guys are asking, I'm giving you my opinion. And it's one thing that I'm not going to do is there are some times when I see you guys get up here, you threaten, you make threats and some people have changed their mind because of that. I feel that this is the right thing to do and I'm not going to let a group or a single people come up here and make threats and change my mind on what I feel is in the best interest of the city. I honestly think that this is in the best interest of Pleasantville and this is where I'm at, so.
If someone did threaten you, the police.
I'm not going to be talking to you, I'm talking to the young lady now.
Mr. Looney, Mr. Looney? But I did not threaten you.
No, no, not you, no.
But you addressed that and I was addressing my situation.
No, I apologize. I didn't not even throw that at you at all, not at all.
Mr. Looney, can you explain, she asked a question and that's the third time asking a question.
Yes.
The question, explain, the question.
Where did the money go?
$2 million of sewer utility generates excess cash.
Per year?
Per year. One million goes directly into the cash, the payment to the city to help reduce taxes. And the other million dollars is allocated for expenses for the employees that deal with sewer, sewer, hard work salary paid by the sewer for benefits and for payrolls.
How long is that?
It's been going on for nine years. Or if I target beyond that, I may be recognized. But it also takes care of a portion of our benefit costs, a portion of, um, store our payroll. And it had to do with seven council people. Some mayor administrator, myself, clerk, tax office, people who deal directly with the sewer utility in one way or another, a portion of their salary paid by the sewer utility. So that's the $2 million.
Do you think that's wise? That the money should have been used like that when we had a problem with the streets?
Um, there, there was...
Is that a contract?
Is that a contract?
Yes. Is that something that y'all have written, like an ordinance that y'all have written that you use the money in that fashion?
It is, but it's at the level by creating a jersey because we do generate, we own the, we own the sewer system. So we're allowed to move that money.
And do whatever you want.
You know, to the benefit of the taxpayers. I mean, if we did not move $2 million a year into the tax, I mean, our taxes are already...
It is. I'm sixty-five years old.
If we didn't have $2 million a year, every year your taxes are about 40 or 50 cents. Maybe the sewer utility bills would be still the same, but we maybe have some repairs. But you're taxed, and I think the determination started nine years ago or 10 years ago, beyond that. But that, we can either raise your taxes or keep this, keep the sewer rate below at the sacrifice of some repairs in order to move money into the tax, into the area that takes care of the taxpayer.
So all these, these last nine years, y'all...
The war was. I think that was in there, right?
So y'all decided to sacrifice our streets and the sewer in Pleasantville, not repair them and take care of all of them?
During that, that time, before that, we were getting grants to repair the streets. Unfortunately, now it's got to the point where the sewer system under the streets is being repaired. And you can't go and repair a street without repairing the infrastructure. I mean, that's where we all started with trying to bring in something to fix the streets and sewer systems. And there's a lot of different areas out there, Bernard Capital is one of them. We like, we talked to Bernard Capital at the time, there were numbers there, a number that we needed. And there's also, right now there's money available through regular rescue funds, um, our bank. We're all looking, we're looking at all of them.
Okay, so even as a solution, because they said that y'all took the figures, okay, and gave the figures to them, as a solution, why couldn't y'all raise our sewer taxes over a period of time and use that money to repair the sewer? Okay, I just, I mean, I really, I mean, because...
And it should have been done.
But what's...
When it raised the sewer rate in 2009, and 10, 11, 12...
Can y'all, can y'all please?
They didn't want to hit, hit you with both an increase in sewer and an increase in taxes.
I would like to have, then to have 39 years not knowing what's going to come down the line. So, because when, when these elders pay all of their homes, okay, they're going to have to pay taxes and they're going to have to pay a high sewer bill. That's, that's too much. They're not going to want to live in Pleasantville. You're shucking your shoulder, but, you know, think about it. It wasn't thought, it wasn't thought. A good thought process was not put in, seriously. And I mean, thank y'all. And one other thing real fast. Y'all put lines on Franklin Boulevard. Franklin Boulevard didn't have street lines. Just, I went on vacation, came back from vacation and you have street lines on Franklin Boulevard. I didn't understand that, okay?
I'm going to ask her real quick, is that your thing? But you know, I thought the same thing. Yeah, I got to come back, you got to come back afterwards. I want to ask her.
I will make sure he answers.
Make sure.
Please come forward. It's agenda items only. If it's not agenda items, please wait a public portion. Is your item agenda on the board?
Uh, yes, ma'am, please.
Please declare, you state to me what items on the board.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Julius Bedrimal, Vice President of Bernard Capital Partners. Uh, I just wanted to address something I heard a moment ago with regard to how we are earning revenue through the contract. Um, it, it's important, it's, uh, it's very important to understand we spend a lot of time not working, not alone working with the city council or with their financial advisor and based on precedent to determine exactly how are we going to make the, the revenue generated by the utility and collected by us visible and transparent over a term of 39 years? And how are we going to make it so that it's of such an amount to return capital to our investors but also doesn't take any upside away from the customers and citizens of Pleasantville, returns any excess revenues to them to help stabilize rents going forward? What the contract does is it specifies a schedule in every year of the contract what the required revenues need to be to recover our upfront investment of $15 million plus the $10.9 million of investment into the system over the first few years of the concession agreement. That's a fixed amount. It, 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 it has some adjustments to inflation so that we don't have a situation where intractively there is a flexibility for us to avoid keeping pace with the cost of service so we don't have to make tough decisions on deferred maintenance. It means that we're going to continue to have obligations to invest in the system so that we're returning at the end of 39 years a system that is better than the system we have today. And importantly, because it's a fixed required revenue for each year, if there's a dollar collected in excess of that fixed amount that we're bringing to today and specifying today, based on what we know we're going to invest today, if there's a dollar more collected in any given year, that goes directly into a rate stabilization fund. That means that in subsequent years from there, the first dollars that come in, if there's a, now a shortfall below the required revenue, the first dollars to meet that shortfall come from that rate stabilization fund. So I, I, I want to be clear here, because our investors are basically a full capital beat up of pensioners and retirees, they're not looking for upsized, uh, uh, sexy returns. They're looking for stability. That means we're not taking...
They look for stability for us?
They're, they're looking for stability in the investment, which means that if there's any dollar collected more than what we're anticipating, it goes into a rate stabilization fund to benefit you. That's right.
Yeah, but we can't afford what you anticipate.
That's right.
So if we don't have the formula, page 36, explain. Don't look to your partner. I want you to explain it since you've come up here and you've addressed us professionally and I thank you for that. Explain the formula, page 36. I'm happy to. So page 36 addresses what happens if there is a shortfall in required revenue. I don't care about, give me the formula.
It's respectful, but it's respectful, okay?
So what the formula says is what has, what is the new required revenue for the subsequent year if in this year or any prior year, the required revenue was not met or there is a loss or shortfall behind? We can't leave it up to, uh, we can't leave it up to us to determine how much should we now increase the rates to plug that shortfall gap? So we, so we put in this formula, it says, and, uh, the output, the revenue requirement, I think it's R and nominal amount, is a function of RRO, the original revenue requirement, uh, plus some additional return times the loss that was incurred by us in that prior year. That return specifically will be determined at that point in time based on precedent returns that are observed by the, um, Board of Public Utilities. So just like any other public utility, your electric service, your drinking water service, your gas service, if you have that as well, uh, the state regulates and publishes what's a fair rate of return for all those companies that are providing those essential services to you. They dictate what the overall cost of capital and overall return of that company gets. And they do that by, by, uh, basically they do that by establishing what's a fair rate of return for these monopolistic entities. What the contract says is we go to that formula and we input in R in that formula, what's observed from that from the Board of Public Utilities. And that will determine what the new established revenue requirement is. So that wasn't, no really technical explanation, but it's pretty technical, page in the formula.
So just a quick question. So if you're short...
At the end of that year, that period, you don't have a formula?
This is where your question could be asked in public. We're still working in work session. Anyone else that has to come forward for agenda items? Okay, CNN, I need a motion. Is it a agenda item, ma'am?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. State the agenda, please. I mean, the agenda item.
It's the rescinding ordinance.
Okay, I don't want to be rude, but I need to move the meeting on.
Oh, okay.
If you feel that way, I want to apologize. I had to talk. Now, can I have your name, please?
Melanie Frazowski.
Okay, thank you, Melanie.
Um, so I, I was just reading the room and, and I came a little bit later and it just seems like the public does not really trust this company. And then, um, you know, I, I did hear that they were threatening legal action against the city of Pleasantville. And, you know, to me, that just seems like, why would you do business with someone who was going to threaten legal action against you? I mean, they seem like they want to get money from Pleasantville one way or another, whether it's through your sewer system or through suing you for it. And, um, you know, I think the public has every reason not to trust them seeing that this is the tone and the tenor that, that they're taking. Um, you know, as soon as things look like they're not going their way, they're threatening legal action. That's all I wanted to say and I thought that was kind of obvious, that you wouldn't do business with people like that.
Anyone else from the public?
And I just want to address this. Can anybody hear me? I think we're missing, missing an opportunity here. It seems like, like the, the public is really crying out. I mean, I've, I've, since I've been around to see, I've never seen this much support, whether it's adversary or supporter, since I've been in Pleasantville. I've been in Pleasantville for 40 something years. People are coming out and they're, they're, they're crying their hearts out. And I think as, as a council and as a public, we're missing an opportunity. This is a, can be the beginning of something that we need here in Pleasantville that we have not had in a long time, you know, ever since I've been here. And so you guys need to listen to the public and listen to what they're saying. There's, there's alternatives. When I first heard about this, you know, I was fully supportive until I found out different. There's alternatives to this. You've had people come out from the public and say that they're willing to raise my taxes so that we can pay for this. Whatever, sewer. Whatever happened in the past, what they did with the money and all that, that's not here or there. I mean, we're into a whole different thing now. We need to move forward. There's infrastructure money and people are willing to, uh, rate, have their sewer raised and you can control your own destiny. All right? You can control your own destiny in terms of how much taxes you're going to pay. If somebody else comes in and manages that, then they'll tell them. What happens if Bernard Capital in six, seven, eight years decides to sell it?
Contract's still in place.
If you sell it to somebody else, same time, they're still in place. Now, I asked a question the last time I was here, you guys were here, to somebody, whether you were a hedge fund investor and the answer was no. Now, two things wrong with that. Either that wasn't the truth or the person didn't know. Neither one of those are good. Right?
No, I, but I don't know if this is appropriate.
Well, I didn't talk to you, I asked somebody.
You're looking at me.
Well, I'm looking at all you guys who sit here.
It's an infrastructure investment fund manager. Totally different.
My, my point was that we're missing an opportunity here to work together. All right? We get this done. Listen, listen to the public, please.
Anyone else from the public? CNN, we're supposed to vote a portion.
Motion.
On favor? Now we have council, councilwoman.
Okay, I'm ready. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you all for waiting while we were in executive session. I know that was an extremely long time and a first, a first since I've been on council or as mayor. And I just want you to know that I, we all realize that your time is just as important as ours. And we're sorry that you had to wait like that, but we are trying to just talk it through and get it right. But again, thank you and we, we apologize for taking so long. We haven't had dinner either.
I reserve the beginning of the next meeting. I say what I had to say, the executive session. And, um, to entertain a motion, I entertain a motion to adjourn this work session.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
All right.
This is the regular meeting of the City of Pleasantville City Council. Today's date, today's date is June sixth, today's date is June seventh, no, it's June sixth, twenty twenty-two. The time is ten, 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 ten. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper and performs with the open public evening act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Would you please stand for what you need and education to reflect. Our father, John Jordan, in our name, he will be died on earth as it is in heaven. Give us a day, take a breath, give us a trespass, which we should give those trespass against us. Please not to temptation, but deliver us from all evil, God's kingdom, power, and glory. Pledge allegiance to the fact of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with unity, justice, and moral.
Swan, here.
Davenport.
President.
Fimmelarum.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Camona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Sistrum.
Present.
I entertain a motion to dismiss the reading of the minutes.
Second.
Hold the favor.
All right.
Do you have any complications, presentations, allegations at this time?
Okay, first, your agenda is ordinance number nine, first reading, rescinding ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-two.
And I have a question, please. In a long term council, the city Pleasantville, and fully understanding the business and the way we did business before, we got a chance to negotiate the contract. When you're in negotiation committee with the contract, we moved this five, six times, completely and totally disagreed with this, this, I think is unethical. It shouldn't have been placed here in the first place. It should be, oh. And I want to put that down on the record, and especially, and especially because we have a judiciary responsibility to keep the city of Pleasantville out of harm's way. This is an agreement that we took two and a half, it wasn't two years, two and a half years, with our capital, ourselves, and I discluded a couple of people that were doing our solicitor, and also our, I see it forward earlier, my name, boy was that, to help negotiate this agreement that we had. And then we walked in for our council, and it was forward quite a few times. Oh, that's even.
Necessary motion. There you go. Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
No.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas. No. Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
No.
Okay, so we have four yeses and three noes. This passes to second reading, scheduled for June the twenty-second. Okay, next is what is number ten, providing for the empowerment and forfeiture of all tearing vehicles and their bikes operated of public streets, highways, or right-of-way in violation of NJSA thirty-nine, colon, three C dash seventeen.
I have a question for you. All right.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Ordinance move is second reading, scheduled for June the twenty-second. Resolution one zero four, authorize a tax collector to refund taxes as a result of a tax court settlement?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred five, approval to submit a local transportation planning fund application and execute a grant agreement with the NJDOT.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred six, approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the NJDOT for the Transit Village Grant Program.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred seven, approval to submit a municipal aid grant application and execute a grant agreement with the NJDOT.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred eight, approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the NJDOT for the safe streets to transit program.
Necessary motion.
Second. Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum. Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred nine, endorsing an urban enterprise zone physical year twenty twenty-two in an amount of one hundred ten thousand forty-nine dollars and zero cents.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Come on, I take it. Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred ten, authorizing submission of a grant application and execution of a grant contract with the NJDOT for the acquisition of an automated license plate reader.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred eleven, providing for budget desertion into the twenty twenty budget.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred twelve, approving the renewal of a club liquor licenses for the twenty twenty-two to the twenty twenty-three term.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred thirteen, approval for the newer plenary retail distribution of the licenses for the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-three term.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one fourteen, approving the renewal of plenary retail consumption of the licenses for the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three term.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yep.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred fifteen, authorizing the submission of a application for the New Jersey Department of Community Services, Division of Mental Health and Addiction Services, grant funding.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred sixteen, granting approval of a community yard sale in the city on June twenty-fifth at the Tilt and Avenue Ballpark.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum. Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred seventeen, appointing Richard Sheen to the position of a part-time tax assessor for the city.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
No.
So noted, Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred eighteen, granting approval to the Coalition for a Safe Community for a Community Cookout on June twenty-first at the Tilt and Avenue Ballpark.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred nineteen, appointing a tax assessor to refund taxes for certain properties in the city.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Did I miss anybody? Camona.
Yes.
I'm sorry, damn, I'm on a roll. I'm sorry. Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred twenty, authorizing a tax assessor to cancel taxes for disabled veterans.
Motion.
Second.
Tax collector, I say, assessor. Second, Fimmelarum. Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one twenty-one, authorizing an agreement for redemption and installments for a municipal tax lien.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one twenty-two is an add-on. It is authorizing the tax collector to prepare and mail estimated tax bills.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need a motion to approve the bills.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Second.
So noted, Fimmelarum.
Yes.
Thomas. Yes, the everything but zero, zero, nine, two, two, because I'm still unclear. Okay, what is yours, John? Have you done what that is?
Um, but a hinds, hinds, hinds.
Okay, very well. Okay, so all except for our hinds, okay. So noted. Camona.
Yes.
Okay. Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Motion has been approved. Next, I need a motion to approve bingo and rat poison.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Thomas. Yes. Fimmelarum. I saw you here. Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Motion has been approved. Next is public portion. Apologies.
Next is public portion. Anyone from the public? Three minutes, one time, everybody.
Three minutes, Mr. King. Good evening. Patricia King, on West Street Avenue of Pleasantville. I would just like to note, the gentleman from Burnard Capital, he stated in his explanation about that formula, that if there's a revenue shortfall, he never mentioned anything about who's going to, who's going to pay that revenue shortfall. And on page seventy-two, that concession agreement says that the city will pay. So that's part of, that's part of what he did not make public. So I, I don't trust him. Now, maybe some of you do, but I don't. And if a person can't give me full, say, disclosure, then I don't trust them. And I also would like to state that from my understanding, what we have is a memorandum of understanding and not a contract. And there is clearly a difference between the two. Also, in that concessionary agreement, it says that it can be terminated anytime prior to closing. So when you say that you put two and a half years in, well, good for you. That's why you're sitting there. But the bottom line is this, I don't agree with it. I'm not satisfied with it. And if you allude to the fact that, well, currently, the way that we're doing business is bad, when I say, well, why don't you get it right? Get it right. Pay your own bills, manage your, your own, I'd say, infrastructure. And it certainly can be done, because you're supposed to, we're supposed to have, let's say, professional people working for us, use them. Use them. And I would also like to say that I'm here voicing my opinion. I threaten no one. I haven't felt that anyone has been threatened. But I have become aware of something that was, that I was unaware of, and it does affect me.
I have a question, well, a couple of questions, but this question is not about sewer. This question is about, I want to know, and I don't know if this is the correct form for this or not, but I'm very, very concerned about our young children going to school on a daily basis. What is being done to beef up protection for these children? As you know, Pleasantville is a walking district. These kids walk from everywhere. Now, on Main Street and sometimes on New Road, you see the presence, the presence of some police um, up near on this side of town where the kids live, but these kids come from everywhere. And our young women are being attacked. Our, our young daughters and grandchildren are being attacked and on the way to school. Seven fifteen in the morning, what is gonna be done about protecting these children? Are they gonna, when, when are they gonna beef up patrol when the children are going to school? Not on the main street where everybody can see them, on the backstreets where nobody sees these kids? Where they gotta walk to a bus stop. Some of them gotta walk to a bus stop, most of them walk all the way to school. They need to be protected. So that's my first question.
Chief, you can just answer it.
The question is valid. We are out there, I mean, I get this all the time, you know? When people look out their doors, they don't see a police car. We're out there, we, we can't be everywhere, you know? And listen, I'm just as concerned about our young ladies walking to school and stuff like that, just like what happened to the young lady on Brighton Avenue not too long ago. You know, we are out there. We get these complaints all the time, my officers are out there. And what you're saying about the main streets and stuff like that, yes, we need to get back over into the, we call them secondary arteries, is what you're referring to, and not the main roads. But we are out there, we're, we are out there all the time. We're out there on the south side, we're out there on the north side, but we can't be everywhere at the same time.
I understand that you cannot be everywhere at the same time, but maybe you ought to put on a couple of extra patrols in the morning. Now, if you want my tax dollars, I'll pay you for that. A couple of extra patrols in the morning to make sure that these kids get to school safely. My granddaughter is afraid to walk to school, and she lives down the street from school. She is afraid to walk to school, and no child should have to live like that. And it might be nice for you to have a meeting with the public, letting them know what changes have been made to ensure their safety and what changes will be made. What can be done to ensure more safety for these kids?
Everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think the school board better wants to say something.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, we just got a, a grant, I'm certainly sorry, for, to help in, uh, in the sidewalks. This man proposing we do a study. All children will ride buses to school. Think they stay. No. The state law eighteen eighty-six. You know, they're two miles, and then you gotta get the youngsters to school anyway you see fit. We're proposing, and we have a study. All children will ride a bus to school. We're paying money for a bus aid that puts a lot on the bus. We're working on that to secure it. And, and we can get our youngsters at a small level. That money to pay another person to ride on a bus to make Johnny stay in his seat for hours. That's what'll help us, we're buying three new buses. I wanna go to this page. We're buying three new buses, and I'm going back. We need two more, we need two more. What the answer is, all youngsters should be bused to school.
You're right, and I appreciate that, I'm comfortable in this board meeting. But, um, 'cause these kids walk in the rain. And what I see is when the kids walk all the way to school, and I pick some of them up soaked from head to toe, 'cause they walk in the rain, then they get to school and don't can't go in the building. I have called the superintendent of schools many a day, open the door and let these kids inside the building, and they're already soaking wet.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was only one of my questions. Well, they had to respond, so I don't think their time, when their response should take away from my time. I have stated as soon as I reached this podium that I had more than one question. And there's been plenty of people that came up here and speak a whole lot longer than me. My next question is about this sewer contract, right? You, it's not signed, so you don't have a contract. So why is it so hard to walk away from? I asked that question before, nobody answered me. Why are you so dug into it that you don't care about what the people of Pleasantville think? That mean you wanna answer, Mr. President?
Yes, I do. Just because we don't agree with you doesn't mean that we don't care. I care for Pleasantville just as much as you or anyone else out there.
That's not what I said.
That's what you said, we don't care.
That's not, I said you don't care about what we, what we're saying.
I don't agree with you.
Okay, that's different.
And that's it, I just don't agree with you. You know, you guys, you come up here and you come at, at us as council people just because we have a difference of opinion, and that's all it is. I talk to you outside of here all the time. I talk to anybody outside of here all the time.
You used to.
When I see you, I talk to you, Renee.
Now-
But understand, it's just a difference of opinion, and this is my belief. They change their mind.
Okay, but you're one person, we know a whole lot of people on this council, why you let somebody else answer? You can, you answer?
I'm sorry. Well, so she don't wanna hear that. My vote reflects my opinion.
No, Tony, like you said, we talk all the time, so I heard your answer already.
Well, don't answer the question.
Give somebody else a chance. I didn't direct it to you.
Just how it votes and reflects my opinion about it.
Okay. He's dictating to the president what to do now? He's dictating to the president, so you're the one that has him banging the gavel every time somebody come up here that says something that you don't wanna hear.
No, just me.
Got you, got you. Got you.
Uh, anyone else wanna vote?
Good evening again, everyone. I have a question for each of the, um, council members that still supports this deal, I'll just go left to right from my left hand. Carl Thomas, can you tell me what a revenue adjustment event is in this contract?
I'll, I'll talk to you.
No, I'm gonna here, talk to me now, please. Tom, if you can't answer now, I don't wanna hear what you have to say. Because it's important that you know this, because you're saying you understood this agreement, and you worked on this agreement, and you understand what it says. A major part of this agreement is this revenue adjustment event. They even call create an adjustment where they say we need ten million dollars, and we'll put it on a book that you have to pay. That's what it really means, but I wonder, do you know that?
Okay, well, Mr.-
Do you know that? Do you know it, ma'am?
Mr. Jones, my vote is my vote.
I'm not asking you about your vote, ma'am.
I'm just saying, do you know, my vote is my vote, and, and please don't stand there and disrespect me. Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm not asking you about your vote, I'm asking you, do you understand what a revenue adjustment is as per this contract? That's what I'm asking you. You said you understood it, you agreed to the terms of it, I'm asking you, do you know what it says? And it, it's major, because cities in the, come to these deals are being established by that one point alone. Fifteen to fifty-nine percent increases in, uh, outside of Pennsylvania because of that one point. Who else doesn't, uh, Mr. Sistrum? What are the revenue adjustments in this contract?
One of the things.
And what are the limits?
Here's, here's one of the things we have in place to explain to you quite a few times, and, uh, uh, we have, uh, had or have a committee. We have a committee to sit down and go over all of these things. They're part Cap, part of Bernard Capital, part City of Pleasantville, to talk about all of these things.
Excuse me, no disrespect, but I'm asking you to tell me, what is your understanding of a major part of this contract? What is it? What is it? No, you just said when you have a committee, you can't get an agreement, you always say that. Everybody have a committee and can't get an agreement, but you don't even understand what it says. I'm asking you, what does it mean?
You're not here to understand.
Oh, I am here to understand. I have to understand to be of the agree or disagree. Understand, that's why it's called a memorandum, memorandum of understanding. It's about understanding. You have no understanding, and yet you wanna agree. That's flawed logic. Flawed, literally flawed logic. Um, Mr. Korea, do you still agree with this deal?
Sir.
No, I, I'm asking the question, I have my time.
My, my vote reflects my opinion about this.
Okay, do you understand what the adjustments are?
Sir. My vote reflects.
Mr. Davenport, do you understand what the revenue adjustments are?
Yes, sir.
As per this contract?
Yes, sir.
And, and do you understand the significance and how impactful they can be?
Well, you know what? The thing of it is, is that you're talking about what it can be. All right, there are things in place to make sure that that doesn't happen, that they cannot, oh, that they cannot raise the, um, the taxes or whatever beyond certain limits. So understand, those things are in place.
Okay.
And you know they are.
No, I know what the contract says. I'm gonna read what it says, one item about that. PV, the present value of such losses incurred and projected to be incurred in connection with such revenue adjustment, uh, event. In other words, if they decided they need ten million dollars in repairs, it becomes a loss on their books, and we have to pay it because they have it in their contract, and say, if they determine that there's a revenue adjustment that needs to be made, we're obligated to pay it. You cannot say, damn, if they're not limited in getting it.
Anyone else from the public?
Urban, seven thirty, Maple Road. I just wanna be very clear, um, on Councilman Davenport's, uh, earlier comment about talking to people on the street. A lot of us in here are not random strangers that just decided, hey, we'll waste a couple of hours tonight at City Council. We've met, we've phone-banked, we've walked on the street, we've handed out flyers in English and in Spanish, we've sent out hundreds of Facebook messages.
Can I ask you a question?
But, no, just let me finish.
But it's only the same people here.
Just, just let me, just let me finish.
All right, it's the same people here.
Okay, people work, two, three jobs, by the way. So, Councilman Davenport, we're here, but you said you're talking to people, but they're strangely not here. And the other thing, I wanna be very clear, Mr. Solicitor, what exactly did the attorney for Bernard Capital say? What happens if we leave this MOU? 'Cause I understand it, that they're gonna take legal action against the City of Pleasantville. Is that understanding correct?
Those were his words.
Those were his words.
His words were his.
And everyone in this chamber heard those words. And that's the people, President, Mr. President, that you wanna do business with? We didn't even do anything. And they're already threatening litigation. That's two and a half years worth of work, by the way. Is when things go wrong for Bernard Capital, when their investors aren't getting paid, and they're not minimum investors, look at the rap, it's like, it's not a bunch of retired pension fund members, kid, come on. They're lying to our faces. But at the first sign of trouble, their attorney comes in here and threatens to sue us. So that's what we should get out of this meeting, thank you.
Hi, it's my fellow Williams, thirteen oh one Broad Street again. So, I proceeded to go outside and ask the gentleman to come back in so that he can explain that, uh, if there's short portion, okay, and what would happen. So he told me that, and correct me, this agreement, this ordinance is rescinded? Is that, is that what they're saying? So therefore, he's not gonna answer any more questions about it?
So what does that mean?
I'm sorry, and help me out. Okay, I, I don't understand, he's not coming back in because it's rescinded, that's because y'all voted for, for the six to three, okay? Is that correct? So that means, what does it mean to be rescinded? That means you're no longer, it's out the door?
Yeah, one more's another.
Okay, so, so let me ask the question. So being though it's out the door, I believe, I heard them say funding was already issued to Pleasantville.
Yeah.
For legal fees.
No, that's not what I heard.
That is what I heard and understood, he said for legal fees. I think his, his quote was two hundred thousand dollars for legal fees and forty thousand dollars for the local finance.
And I heard something else. I heard, I heard something else, I heard another figure. Okay, that they said that they've issued to us already, is that a true fact? As a, okay, so was that money dispersed? Or is it still available to just give it back to them?
We have paid for legal fees for the past two and a half years because we can't do anything without counsel.
Okay.
So the, the part of the deal was, the understanding originally was that they wanted the deal, they pay for our attorneys, our legal counsel. And that's what we have spent to date, is the two hundred thousand dollars that they have paid. The other forty thousand dollars was the forty thousand dollars for an outside third party to look at the new agreement, because Suez backed out. The lit, the, um, local finance board, it was up to them, they were the ones that said, well, put the brakes on, we wanna look at this, before it even, we even made any kind of motion for anything. So I believe that it was with the two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars for legal fees and forty thousand dollars for the, I, I don't know what else you heard.
Really low, low numbers, really low, low numbers.
Okay, so there is some finances that has to go back to them. Okay, you, you gotta, you hit me. All right, so just real, I'm sorry, number nine, what is this? Authorization to submit a grant for application and execution of a grant contract with the New Jersey DOP for the, what's, what's that? With license plate reader. That's for the officers? Or to, in their vehicles, to read the license plate readers, is that what that is?
Yes, it's, it's a device that Malibu, South of the police cars, you might have seen them, look like cameras, Malibu police car.
Okay.
To do various investigations, traffic related, or, you know, criminal.
Okay, and then my other last, and, uh, I'm, I'm going for today. No, I'm not. Uh, the streets, the lines in Pleasantville. The, right.
Go ahead.
What, what, where did that money come from? Why, why, why?
I was gonna ask another question.
No, the lines in Pleasantville were never there.
I was going a different direction than you were going.
Okay.
I looked at the, the lines and the line situation, what the line creates, 'cause the street is so bad, because we don't, we didn't have the money to do an infrastructure inside. Uh, that, uh, the streets are so, the streets are so bad, you really have to dip off, over to that line and, uh, in various situations, so you don't tear up your car. So that's what I, that's where I was going with that.
Oh, okay, well, but why would y'all do that? Why do y'all do that?
I noticed that after we did the show yesterday.
You know, I just, I just-
But, uh, Miss, thank you.
Didn't you mean our friend, Tony?
Yes, ma'am.
Because of the, the, uh, how unsafe it is. It's so unsafe as far, there's no lines indicating what side of the street at all.
Oh, okay. What, I'm sorry, and I'm first to that.
I'm sorry.
That's my-
It's up to you. Yes, it is. Anyone else from the public?
I'll be back.
Anyone else from the public?
Trust me.
I'm back. So, I just wanted to, Bernhardt Capital left me wide out there. But I sent out an email to, uh, Linda back in May. So unfortunately, she wasn't able to get these questions answered, so I figured, 'cause she's just an employee for the City of Pleasantville, so I figure you guys did all the research, so you would be able to answer these questions. Linda, is it okay if I present this email to them? Um, so I had a couple of questions about Pleasantville Environmental Partners LLC. Are you guys ready for the list of questions? Can you please provide me information on how and why this company was formed? It is always just formed back in November. What experience do they have with any municipality, and what would they have to offer us? Who are the owners of Pleasantville Environmental? Uh, who are the board of directors? Where's the shareholder list and/or its members? Who is the CEO? Who's the president? And who are the officers?
That was a question raised before in another meeting, in, in that kind of thing, and I went back. That's why Delaware is the most popular state to incorporate, because their laws are so lax into telling anybody who, that's why everybody incorporates there. You incorporate here in the state, you have to list a president, how much they own, a vice president. In State of Delaware, Mickey Mouse.
Right, I understand.
That's, that's what it is.
So, so with that being said. So why did you go to Delaware to do? Thank you, with that being said, why would we-
Because they're in business and they don't want any, and I'm not particularly saying them, anybody. You look anywhere and see who's incorporated in the State of Delaware, if you're in business, you're gonna go to the place that's the easiest place on businesses, because even if you have a problem, there is no judge that's gonna take it up. There's no panel, there's no numbers.
Right, so if Pleasantville, if, if Pleasantville, with all of that being said, and you guys know this, and you have no background information on this company, why on this god green earth would y'all even consider selling us to this company? I guess mom is the word, 'cause. So y'all, so y'all don't have to answer us, is that what you're saying?
Explained myself quite a few times today.
And you haven't explained this out to me, and you haven't asked these questions, 'cause you didn't even know I had these questions. Only one knew I had these questions was Linda, because I sent them to Linda. You did not talk about Pleasantville Environmental, you did talk about Bernhardt.
Ten million dollar sale, a ten million dollar sale of, of, of the system, the loss of state.
What does that have to do with my questions, Ricky?
This is how we got here in the first place.
Ricky, I asked you, I don't wanna know how many I had.
Fifteen times better than of that agreement.
Ricky, Ricky, sometimes we gotta go back to the road board, sometimes things don't work out, that's what we teach our kids, right? This deal ain't working out. You have not answered my questions. You have not answered my questions. My question is particularly about Pleasantville Environmental, and it's unfair for me to have to keep putting this on Linda.
Filling system that we have to fill.
Who is Pleasantville Environmental Services, that's my question to you. Who is environmental, who are they? Who's Pleasantville Environmental? Excuse me?
We said this council here, this, this council here, maybe, say, is attempting to try to save Pleasantville from becoming-
You ain't saving Pleasantville, Ricky, who is Pleasantville Environmental?
This, 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 listen, let me explain it to you as well as I can, okay? If you wanna keep going back and forth, I'm ready to go home.
Hey, you too.
Listen, Pleasantville Environmental Partners is a combination of people from Bernhardt Capital, council people, and I think it's supposed to be a couple of people from the public, you understand? So it was a group that was together to take care of the, um, question, so that's what it was.
Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you, that's all, that's all I needed to say. I knew that, I knew that, I seen it right on the wall. It didn't take you even one to figure that out.
My answer, my question, y'all didn't wanna hear.
Excuse me, Ms. Tally, can you come back?
I, I'm, yes, please do.
Are you asking about Pleasantville Environmental Partners, the LLC?
Who have incorporated themselves in November.
Which is totally different than a board that we were talking about before. There are no members of council in that LLC, and if there are, they better be doing it for now.
To get to here, that's all we wanted to know.
Mercedes.
All right, all this time.
Um, as the lady who reported this asked, oh, who are they? Is there any city council, any administrators here? Or any board members, council people, anyone a part of the LLC that's listed in Delaware? Mr. Davenport, would you like to answer?
Yes, like I said, once, once the contract is um, taken care of, if it goes through, whether it goes through or not. But once it gets done, then the people are appointed. People from Bernhard Capital, people from the city council here, two from the city council, then also from the public, if I'm not mistaken. But that is how it's supposed to be made up. Once this here thing is done and brought to its fruition. So as of right now, it's just a company that's there until the deal goes through and then it's supposed to be, you know.
You're talking about an advisory board. The advisory board that they're talking about is comprised of two members from Bernhard Capital. Two members from the operating group. One member name by name, and three people from the city. And I brought this up last week, it has nothing to do with the LLC. The LLC will be intact for thirty-nine years. This is an advisory board that is outnumbered five to three, right off the bat, so.
My second question, and um, the city of Pleasantville and everyone here would be definitely remiss if this question is not answered. Now that this is rescinded, what's the plan for the four of those? So what is your plan to, one, incorporate the city? What is your plan to assist them on an alternative measure? What do you do now? Because as Council President Sis Trump mentioned, and when the N double A C P is prevalent. It's because if there is a water issue like Flint, Michigan. So the reason why it is stated in that way is because if there could be a water issue. How much time, question one, time to the essence? How long, what is the plan now? And how long is this situation? When does it get wrapped up now? Because two and a half years, everybody talking about two and a half years, complicated. How many more years would it be now to address this issue? Please let your constituents know.
First of all, it's not water. Flint, Michigan is drinking water.
Right.
This is sewer water. Nobody's drinking this, this is no. The water system that we get does not have anything to do with, and it does not come anywhere near the sewer system, okay? So let's, let's put that into a separate thing. The plan of action is that we have taken it on as a city which has been approved by this seven council board unanimously. To go out for bond, which we are doing, to fix the roads, to do the same work that they would do for less money. No increase of sewer taxes. And we do it ourselves, I think we're perfectly capable, we're big girls and boys to do that. And keep the two million dollars in our pocket every year, which we lose when we sign that contract.
Counselor Sis Trump.
Because it was misappropriation of funds.
Counselor Sis Trump, shook your hand twice. And run to the waterway. Can you explain to your constituents, the people that don't understand it, the waterway from drinking water to sewer water does not touch? Can you explain?
It, it's, it's been noted. And um, and one of, one of my good reasons for also, I was the city of Newark Deputy Mayor. She told me herself, in her office, that if it wasn't for Wayne Latifah, Shaquille O'Neal, and also Mark Zuckerberg. Also, there's also Mark Zuckerberg, it would have the Flint issue. It would have had the same, Newark, Newark, New Jersey would have had the same issue. And be, and um, so when we, so in light of this Bernhard Capital, the deal that we have here, the deal we have here. What we have here, this would help rectify, this would help rectify a situation that's been a thorn in our side for well over twenty years, well over twenty years.
Can I add something? I have granted contract backwards, forwards, backwards and forwards. There, you're talking about Flint and water commingling with sewer water? There is nothing in that contract that states that they're gonna keep the two waters away from anything anyway.
Thank you for elaborating on that.
Your studies, I'd like to add too, I think it was stated that we may not, we may not raise sewer. Which we haven't in so many years, like ten year, ten years at least. And we can't, I, I don't think any of us could sit here and say that we're not gonna raise sewer.
But I mean, it won't be like any, we would have control of it.
If I may, and I wanna be completely transparent about this, I talked about, as a woman familiar, just talked about being able to do it. Quite frankly, and I was one of the first ones saying, I think after I checked all the numbers, we can probably do this ourselves. But it'll take raising the sewer fees as well. So I wanna be really transparent and honest about this, because if we're gonna take this on ourselves, that's gonna come up. We all gonna have to agree on that, okay?
You understand everything that's going on, that's the way it works. So we.
A pound of dirt is ten dollars.
Um, before we, before we leave the point, I think it's important to clarify, I think that happened through discussion, that happened amongst the council members, but, uh, two things. The rescission, if there's gonna be one, does not take effect until after the second reading and adoption of second reading. So, I know the shorthand to say that it's been rescinded, it hasn't, legally, nothing has happened yet. Uh, the other point is Pleasantville Environmental Partners is a single purpose LLC. And it is intended to be, under the proposed agreement, the concessionaire that will actually operate the utility over the period of the agreement. It is not in any way, shape or form a part of the city. There are no city council members, there are no officials of any kind on it. That is an entity that was created by the proposed vendor, and its purpose stated would be to be the actual operator. There will be, as I believe, Councilman Familar and Councilman Davenport pointed out, there will be an advisory board. And it's that advisory board that would have members of council and other representatives of the city. The advisory board is totally separate from the concessionaire. The concessionaire will be the party that legally is under the contract, the operator of the utility. So, just to make that clear, uh, nobody from the city is part of that LLC.
Just yet.
Well, if it's illegal, so probably.
Just yet. If, if y'all did go, girl.
Crystal Noel. So the first thing that I want to give my opinion on is apples to oranges. When we compare a sale to a long-term lease, those are apples to oranges. If you sell a house, that's it, you sell the house. Comparing a sale to a lease, if you own a house still, you lease it, you don't compare it to selling it. That makes no sense to me to say, oh, well, they was gonna do this for us, and that's all they was given. Contractually, they don't compare. That's the first thing. When it comes to seeing all y'all and how y'all operate, there appears to be discord and disagreement. And y'all can't get y'all stories straight. Does it sign? Some say yes, some say no. What is the legal obligation that the city of Pleasantville has entered into currently? Not what happened before, how long it's been going on, what's gonna happen? What it is now is what I want to know. Does anybody have that? Who is entered into agreement? Did the city of Pleasantville enter to agreement? Because according to the attorney, y'all on the hook.
Yet.
So which is it? We don't wanna do, have a song and a dance, we wanna know what's going on, what's the real deal? How long has the accountant, been the accountant for the city of Pleasantville? How long? Nine years? The same, how time that the sewer was suppressed? You've been in charge of the finances? Wait, so when was?
I've been here twenty-one years. Right? And that was being done, when I first got on, we, I went, like, first thing I heard about was that, we're like, yo, we're gonna stop this while it just never can get stopped. It was just like, because they were, they, they lowered the tax, they kept putting it into taxes, and keeping, trying to keep.
Who's saying?
Like us. I mean, it wasn't like, it was just like a dirty little secret. Like, we always wanted to try to get it down, but it was like, what are you gonna do? You're gonna, we were giving it back, you know, the residents were getting, they were being, basically the residents were getting the money. So it was like helping them along, and it just, it never, it just.
It spiraled out of control.
It, it was out of control twenty-five years ago, and it's like, Barry, you know, you're trying slowly. It was probably worse way, I mean, who knows what the numbers were way back. It's been wean, it's been a long time weaning it down, weaning it down. It just never could wean down.
Chair, we, we gotta be very careful with our words. Um, and when you say it's been a dirty little secret.
It was a dirty little secret.
It was not a dirty little secret. And I, and I say that not to argue with you, but to make sure that the public understands, you don't want that.
No, it wasn't.
You don't want that.
It goes back a long way.
Let me explain so that we don't take this out of context, because there's no dirty little secrets that should be going on. And what happens, and I think we talked about this in one of our, in our council meetings about, how did we continue to get, get away with this for so long? It predates our CFO. It predates Councilman Swine, this has been a practice.
But that's not what I'm saying.
Let me finish, please. It has been going on ever since, most of us has, has been here. And the auditors, they have a, um, obligation to audit our budget every single year. And they recognize that this is a practice that the city has been doing. And with, and at some point in time, we all got to the table and said, this practice can no longer continue. It's not illegal, it's not unethical, it's just a bad practice. And most of you have said it today because you, you should take the money and fix your infrastructure, but you're not. You're trying to take it and balance the budget, and it's just, it's not working. And you said it perfectly, that it just spiraled out of, out of control.
It's not sustainable.
No, it's not. It's not. So, with that being said, within the last ten years or so, and Council President has been sitting on sewer ever since I've been here. We've been having the same discussion about how do we wean ourselves off of this practice and get our streets fixed at the same time? And so, cause everybody thinks that we just woke up one day and said, oh, let's do this, this is not what happened.
I'm not intending that.
I didn't say you in particular, but what I'm trying to make the point is, is that this has been an ongoing discussion for years. For, for many, many years. And it's not a dirty secret, it's very transparent, it's on our audit, and this is something that we wanna get the city, get, take, take the city away from doing. So that we can fix our infrastructure.
So how long till you reach that point?
And that's, that's a good question, but you have to wean yourself off of it, you can't arbitrarily.
Because if I'm in charge.
I, I, you're not in charge.
No, right, but I, you take leadership, if you take ownership of the situation, and you've been there ten years. Like, if you raised a kid for ten years, if you raised a kid for ten years, you're responsible for that.
Listen, we are taking responsibility, this is why we're having a conversation with you to explain to you what we're trying to do. You can't arbitrarily just stop it. You can't stop it, you have to wean yourself off of it. And the approach that these guys tried to take by saying, take the concessionaire agreement was one of the ways to fix it. But obviously, that's not the best thing to do, and we all recognize that, so we're trying to sit down and come up with a better plan. But to say that it's something that the city was doing, and nobody knows about it, is just incorrect. It's incorrect.
No, I understand, it's a poor business practice. Um, as far as events, like when y'all had that at the rec center? If y'all are honoring our men and women of service, that should be a separate event. So that it does not bring with it contention or grievances that the residents have. That should be celebrated. Men and women in blue, anyone who served in the city and they're being celebrated, that should be a separate event in its own entirety. Not coupled with business of the city that is, you know, contentious.
I agree, and we asked them to separate it, and they asked that it not be. The, the fire department wanted it there, we, we totally agree with you. But we gave them their desire and they were pleased.
And as far as the part-time, I personally, if somebody's part-time, it should be per diem. It shouldn't be that they get a salary. It should be per diem because of one day a week? I mean, if anybody works one day a week, that's just.
Our territory, so we can take it out with this thing.
Okay, so, we have sold off, I've seen it's a practice of selling off assets. Pleasantville, I don't care who's here, whoever's in charge, been selling off assets. Hoarding the town, giving away revenue by selling off assets. We need to stop.
Anyone else in the public? Saying no one?
Good evening, Councilman. Um, being as though this deal is rescinded.
It's not.
Well, that's the first reading. From the looks of it, it's gonna be rescinded. I hope that you guys get together and come up with an alternative plan to make this thing work. Because it's been well overdue. Um, I heard the, I heard the young lady talking about Franklin Boulevard. On Franklin Boulevard, me as a child have seen those same potholes, dits. It's been like this for almost forty years. That street hasn't been repainted at all. The only reason why part of it was repainted, it was because over by the gas company, it was contaminated, they had to dig all that up. And that's the only reason why that got repainted. So I hope you guys get together and come up with an alternative plan. We keep talking about the infrastructure money, this, just get together and, and make this thing happen for the residents. Cause our streets are terrible. Everyone in here knows our streets are terrible. But also, I want to commend everyone in this room. I love, I love when the public comes out and something's not right. And they come and talk to their elected officials. That's what this is about. And I heard, um, Mr. Ward say that he hasn't seen, you know, this is the first time he's seen the public come out and address issues like this. It's not the first time. It happened with the transfer station. Well, that's what you call it, it's the dump. And the people, not one person that I know, came up and spoke in favor of this, that nonsense. And Mr. Ward says, you guys should listen to the public. The public spoke about that transfer station. Mr. Ward, you're being hypocritical, maybe you need to go home and talk to your wife and tell her that he said, her, you know, change her mind and listen to the public. Because the public doesn't want that transfer station either. The transfer station is just a, is, is a worse deal than the sewer did. It's worse. So you guys should think about rescinding your vote on that transfer station as well. I don't know what the problem is, that you guys want a dump in Pleasantville. At what cost? At what cost? Hopefully, I brought it up at the last meeting, when you were talking about rescinding your vote on the sewer. And I asked, can you rescind the vote on the transfer station? Then it happened. I was told that I would get information of what needs to be done so it can be rescinded. I haven't received anything. Maybe you can explain to me this evening, if that vote can be rescinded? Because the public does not want a dump, or whatever you wanna call it, transfer station. No one wants it. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Saying I wanna add some motion. All those in favor? Now we come to Councilman Mayor.
How are you talking?
Mayor Ward.
Good evening, thank you for coming out. The transfer station will be taken care of and discussed after we get done with the sewer. And as far as what Mr. or Mrs. Ward talks about, that's their business. I just like everyone that comes up, we welcome all of your, uh, your, um, comments, but I do ask for respect. I ask you to respect us as we're respecting you. And that's all that I ask. And everybody's opinion, everyone on council that voted, they voted their conscience. And that's what they have to live with. But everybody that's been voted in, was, I imagine, was voted for what you believed in. You know, who you believed in, or who you thought would be best to hold a position. I appreciate everyone's vote, but I won't say, I heard someone say earlier that, uh, that, uh, opinions have been changed because, um, you know, of the voting threats. That doesn't bother me, because if you vote not to vote me in, that's because you didn't think that I was the best one, or I deserved the vote. And I can live with that. But while I'm in office, I'm going to vote my conscience. I'm going to vote what I think is best for all the, all you residents, because what you deal with, I deal with also, and many of the other council people sitting up when it dies. Thank you for coming out, and I do ask that you continue to come out and just, um, voice your opinion, voice your opinion. You are, you are the community, you're taxpayers. Thank you.
Mr. Minister. Councilman Fanilar.
Um, I do. Um, I saw some things go on in here tonight that I don't like. I will debate, I will yell, I will scream. I will give you facts. I can debate facts all day long, and we can win by debating facts. What I will not stand for is imputing the names and insinuating that there is some malfeasance going on with people who work for the city or people that are on council. I don't like that. You want to win an argument, put the facts out there. We'll debate the facts. Don't throw any mud, don't say, oh, I think this might be, isn't this crazy? Why are you still doing that? It's a fact of life, and nobody is doing anything wrong. Have a nice night. I'm glad everybody came out. It's always nice to see the public. That's what we're here for. We can only hope that at every meeting, people come out to vote their, to voice their opinions.
Councilman Swine. Phil Stupin.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks, thanks for coming out. And, you know, I think we, as a council, I mean, I've been here over twenty years. And we all have our own little, I mean, we've all worked real, I mean, we all kind of really, even though this has been a chaos, we all work together really hard. And we all really love the city, and we try to do the best we get for the city. I mean, you know, I just can't, you know, me too. I, I feel bad when people are like, throwing mud at head, you're trying to duck it. But it's like, uh, you're going to take the, you're going to be bad. And if that's the way you guys think we are, I, I think you're wrong. But, you know, we really love everybody in the city and want to see it move on. All right, thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Want to let everybody know, my decisions I make are out of my heart, because I love Pleasantville and I love our community. I know a lot of y'all guys said that, uh, don't forget, vote us out. I'm not worried about the votes. I'm worried about my community. That's what I worry about. Thank you, have a blessed night.
Councilman Carrera.
Just want to thank you all for coming in. Please continue your support, continue to come in, and thank you, guys. I know you're all tired. I am. I've got no further comment at this time.
Councilors. Councilman Davenport.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. Um, I'm a little tired tonight, so I'm not going to go too long. Uh, but we had, and I didn't go to it, but my family participated in, and we made sure that these things happened. We had, um, a heck of a track event, um, at the high school on Sunday. Um, Ms. Thomas was there, and I think it was something that the community should be proud of. You know, and it's something that if you are so much into the community, these are the things that you should be out, and should be participating in, because it has to do with our youth. And, um, until we deal with that issue, Pleasantville is going to continue to go in the way that it's going. And, um, you know, I just look forward to things getting better. God bless you and have a good night.
I have to take this moment for a point of order. Um, and I should have done this at the beginning. We have to take a moment of silence. Um, we have had some of the most horrific things happen around the United States of America. People don't know the hell of the differences. And, 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 um, mental, uh, what do you call it? Uh, the mentality of, uh, some people and the youth. And this person that was in Texas happened to be, happened to be young, who killed nineteen kids. Uh, something wrong with us if we don't pay for my particular moment of silence and thank God for the kids that we have and the community that we have. And what we attempt to try to do in being safe, so first I want to say that for one stop, for a moment of silence and prayer.
I'm sorry. President, can we add? No, I'm just saying, can we add the residents of Pleasantville who've been, um, in some type of tragedy as well?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Councilman. Thank you. I want to track me to, track me, and, and, um, just getting to the gate. You, you see where we sent, where we stand, because you get to the gate and, and it's all gated up, and we got to go, the police, the presence, the presence of security was to make sure that there's nobody sneaking in the gate, sneaking around. And then you got to make sure you get, uh, a wand and also metal detecting everything. Sad world we live in, from those days, you know, when those days happened. So really, to come up and, and, uh, at, at various times to think that we don't feel the same way you feel just because we don't agree at this particular time. Always put the city of Pleasantville first, me personally. Been a public servant my whole life. Been a public service, a servant my whole work career. And prior to it, on the military, the unions, and the arms in the city council here. And only because I care. If you ever sat down with me and talked about it, you can hear the stories about the different accomplishments within the structure of my career, showing that I care. I disagree with you. I know the struggles that we have. I know the struggles we have in trying to get, for health and safety of the sewer system. I know the struggles we have for, for trying to deliver that waterfront. I know the struggles we have, as Mr. Calaway was pointing out, Franklin Boulevard, the young lady right here pointed out Franklin Boulevard. I thought she was asking a question about the stripes. And you got to dip, if you, you got to dip to the right, dip away from, to dip away from, to dip that would tear your car up. So these are the things that we were trying, attempting to try to do, or some of us were attempting to try to do, to make things better for you, for you. Thank you for coming out. God bless you. God bless the city of Pleasantville. I'd take a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
All in favor?